This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council Tuesday, April 21st. We have invocations by Council President Levon C. Manzi, District 2, and following the invocation, we will have a Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. First of all, we come thanking you for this day, for life, and for health and strength, asking that you would continue to bless us as a community, as a state, and a country, and a world in general, knowing that you have the entire society in the palms of your hands, asking that you touch those that have been impacted by the coronavirus, the families that have had to cry tears, communities that have lost great members of their societies, ask that you bless the first responders, those who are in the hospitals, those in police cars, those who are even along sanitation trucks, as they keep some semblance of normalcy in our great community. Bless Mayor Stimson, all members of his staff, look down upon the seven members of this council, upon a city clerk, just upon all Mobilians, and upon all Americans in general. We need you at times like this. These are the blessings we ask in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Good morning.
Good morning. We can't see, I can't see you, Doc.
Okay, okay, I'm here.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. in accordance with the Alabama Open Meetings Act and the Governor's supplemental emergency recommendation, we are now meeting remotely, and will continue for at least the next two weeks. While we are all in different places, we are able to participate as if we were all in the council chambers at City Hall. And in keeping with the requirements of the Alabama Open Meetings Act, the public is still able to observe the meeting through the screen. All items we will address during this meeting are either necessary to respond to COVID-19 or necessary to perform essential minimum functions of the city. The public is still able to present comments to the council by emailing them to city clerk at cityofmobile.org up to 30 minutes prior to the meeting. Public comments, which will be acknowledged as received during the meeting, distributed to council members, and included in the meeting minutes. As always, the meeting is live streamed and can be viewed at its website or on the council's Facebook page. Thank you for joining us, and thank you for your continued interest in your municipal government.
Roll call, President Manzi.
Yeah.
Vice President Small.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Yeah.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
Would just ask, if everybody who, anyone who is not speaking, please mute. Thank you.
Approval of minutes of April the 14th.
So moved.
Second. It's been properly moved in a second, any discussion? Great job, as always. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President, I'd like to acknowledge that we have with us today Dr. Bert Isho from the Mobile County Health Department that will give us an update.
Good morning, Dr. Isho, we're glad to have you this morning.
Thank you very much. With me is Dr. Laura Cepeda, who's our Chief Medical Officer. I have to say, your unified command has been working very hard, and we're making progress in how do we protect, and discussions of how we move forward with the COVID-19. In Alabama, there've been 5,092 cases with 175 deaths. In Mobile, we have 686 cases and 35 deaths. We were asked the question about testing so far in the city or county. We've tested 3,906 PCR tests with 686 being positive, or that makes a positive rate for PCR of about 17%. So out of the people who come in with symptoms, meeting the criteria for PCR testing, 17% ultimately turn out to be positive for PCR. The challenges we've had are in the long-term care facilities, and that has been ongoing. We've had to request the assistance of the Alabama National Guard for one facility to help decontaminate, or the correct military term is decon. The unit, they have capacity to move patients from one area to another area as this process goes forward. It should be completed in a very short period of time. They've had to do this in other geographic areas of the state, and they have been trained in how to protect themselves and how to properly do this. The numbers at the metro jails seem to be pretty stable as regard to containment of COVID-19, which you've heard about previously. Also, bed capacity seems to exceed demand in all the hospitals. Ventilators' capacity exceeds demand, and the average day that somebody spends in the hospital who's COVID-19 is about eight to nine days of hospitalization. So our community is, I take my hat off and thank each one of you and the entire community for responding very positively on social distancing, wearing face protection, which we can encourage that a little bit more. So if y'all are out and about retailing, please, if you see somebody who's not wearing proper face covering, we need to encourage that. The local police, sheriffs, departments, and all municipalities have been really working hard to educate the people so that we can help contain the spread of this deadly virus. So if anybody has questions for me, please be glad to answer them at this point in time.
Mr. Chair. Ms. Baker.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Isho, thank you so much for being with us today. You mentioned long-term care facilities continue to be a challenge. Are there others besides the one that we have seen on the news that are presenting any sort of challenge, or is it fairly business as usual for them, except for, of course, with the COVID preventions that they are currently doing?
Good question. There are 30-plus facilities in Mobile County. They, all of them have had, have been working with the Health Department to prevent the spread. We check with them on a very daily basis right now. We had a call with all of them yesterday. And the issues of PPE, in some cases, are challenges. Infected healthcare workers are another issue. And then containment within the facility is, everybody knows, the sad part about this virus is that we, it can be, you can shed virus for up to two to 10 days before you show symptoms of having viral illness. So it's very hard to sit down and say, we're taking the temperature of all of our employees, and then that we know that they're not shedding virus. So it's, it's a challenge, but they're all doing hard work. And really, since Public Health produced a rule saying no visitors, and I'm sorry for you who are not able to visit with your family and loved ones, but that's the whole idea is not to have people going into the facilities who potentially could shed virus, and then this population is the most vulnerable. But all of them are challenged in some form or capacity. The spread of the virus has been relatively contained in other facilities, but again, it's a risky population, and it's not over. So a work in progress, but we've had one that has really gotten a lot of attention, and I think y'all all know which one that, that facility is. But we met with them, and they're working very, very diligently to, to get containment.
One follow-up. If, if a resident in one of these nursing homes does have symptoms or is diagnosed, are the officials within the nursing homes or the long-term care facilities required to notify the families?
That's, I don't know. I would assume so, because that's, that's the relationship of really who's go, who's, you know, the relationship is, most of them have documents on file, and who's their power of attorney, and so on and so forth. And I would assume that they, that that would be part of it, but I don't know specifically. Licenseur and certification is done by the Alabama Department of Public Health in Montgomery, and I'll have to check that. But I'm pretty sure that it's, you need to inform the, the family members. They have to inform the Alabama Department of Public Health of cases, and, and so that's, that is being done. But I'll ask that question with licensure and certification.
Thanks.
Mr. President.
Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Dr. Isho, for joining us this morning. A question that is, that is going around in the community as is, we heard several dates about the peak. Have Mobile reached its peak yet? Are we about to reach our peak, or are we past our peak?
Well, as, as, as they would say, it's a moving target. Some data will indicate that we have, that we have a downward trend in viral cases in Mobile County right now. We really need to have five to seven days. The, all the experts said it was going to happen to owner about this time, so we are, keep our fingers crossed. Did we peak a little early, and how high was the peak going to be? So we're happy to say right now, we have a trend that is going down, but tomorrow, as you're dealing with like a nursing facility, you could pick up 50 cases in a day in one such facility. So we, we're optimistic that we're close to peaking, but remember, everybody needs to know, just because we peak in COVID-19 is, goes back to a lower level. It is still there, and everybody is at risk for it being reintroduced. So as we go relax, we go back to a more normal society, till we have a vaccine, everybody is vulnerable, and it can come back again. So we still, for the next foreseeable, until a vaccine comes out, social distancing, hand washing, we'll probably have to have some kind of facial cover because we have droplet spread. And recent data shows, if you're an athlete, you need to be 15 feet behind the person who's jogging in front of you. And I had a talk with a religious leader, is churches thinking about opening again? Are they going to have face cover? Because if you're really singing in the choir, you can probably blow virus up about three, three pews in front of you if you're really getting to the music. So we, we've got to consider face covering even as we go back to church. So.
I hate the sound. But when we actually find out that, or we at the peak, I mean, would it be like a seven-day calm, or six days of calm, or?
Yeah, it'll be statistical numbers, and you will look at across the state. So we can't just sit down and say, Mobile peaked on Thursday. We'd look at numbers across the state, across the region, because we're still a very mobile society, and we look as the trends of the numbers are continuing to go down, then we, really, the peak is going to be what you look at, what was the high point in the stock market last year? That's an after-the-fact, you know, time, but we, we anticipate that this is, this is close to that period. Does that make sense? But it'll be, it'll be a fifth-quarter analysis that'll say, as we look at all the data, here was the day that was a peak occurred.
Last question. We can't have more than one.
Would you?
We can't have more than one peak, correct?
That's correct. We can't have more than one peak. We can have trends, and it's just like the stock market right now. Is it going to be a V-shaped, you know, recovery and go down, and then the stock market come up, or is it going to be a W? It goes down, it comes up some, and then it goes back down again. There could be a reintroduction in the virus in three to four months. If you look at the 1918 Spanish Flu, it got real quiet, and then it, it was a novel virus. It's an RNA virus, similar to the coronavirus. And then about three or four months later, it got reintroduced, and actually took more lives the second wave than it did on the first wave. We hope this thing is going to be more environmentally sensitive, like the regular seasonal flu. Is it maybe as we get to summertime, the flu activity right now, flu A, flu B activity is going way down. We had a lot of cases that were confused with COVID-19 and being flu cases a month ago. Flu activity is going down. Is this virus going to respond like the seasonal flu, and it decreases the springtime? We do not have that data. We hope so.
I have some questions, if it's okay, President.
Sure, Ms. Rich.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Isho, and to everybody in your agency, and to everybody whose lives have been touched by this pandemic. I have a question. You mentioned a PCR test. Could you elaborate on exactly, we've heard so many things about different tests. We have an agenda item that talks about the antibody test, but what exactly is the test that you referred to that you said 17% of the people tested positive, if I heard you correctly? But if we can get some more background on that, people are very interested in that information.
Yeah. The definitive test, do you have COVID-19, is a PCR, which is a specific reactive test that is, it is emergency use authorized or FDA-approved as the definitive test for COVID-19. The antibody test shows, have you been exposed to coronavirus? There are some antibody tests that are coming out that are specific for COVID-19. If you're exposed to a virus, you can develop IgM, immune globulins, for the acute phase within probably five to seven days, it varies on individual. And then you develop IgG, which is another form of immune globulin, which shows that you have more longer-acting immunity. So we found like with measles in Auburn a while ago, everybody had measles vaccine, that we actually had waning immunity. We went by and tested the IgG status and found out that we needed to re-immunize a lot of college students several years ago because of outbreaks of measles, that we thought the immunity would last a long time. So it's a method of testing the acute phase is, do you have it? Yes, no? That is PCR testing. Were you exposed right now, or have you been exposed? That's immune testing. It doesn't tell you anything right now, do you currently have disease? So if you have IgG antibodies, that shows that you probably had long-term reactivity, if it's specific for COVID-19, and you're probably protected. If it's only for coronavirus, that's a common cold, and there are four common colds that occur every year with coronavirus. So.
Another question that I have is, do we have enough of the PCR testing kits, or whatever they're called, for our city and for our community? Is there a need there? How are you viewing that aspect of things?
There are two, two tests that are, that are coming forward. The PCR is the machine itself, and we have a new machine in Mobile County, and maybe two machines, when they're running and getting results back in less than 24 hours in most cases. The state has the ability to do the PCR test upstairs, and, and multiple commercial labs can do the PCR testing. The time run is not immediate. It's hopefully within 24 hours you have the PCR test back. We have enough capacity right now for PCR. It's $85 per test. So the cost to doing the test, and we're doing some at 251 North Bayou, so people who have need for the test, we can test them at no cost. We gave some kits that go to the state lab, to the Franklin Primary Healthcare Center also. Those tests take a little bit longer, but they're getting the results back in 24 hours, but you have to transport them to Montgomery. By 3:00 in the afternoon, they run them that night, and then we have the results the next morning. So those tests are no cost to, to, to the patient to do those tests, but if they have underlying insurance, the Alabama Department of Public Health wants us to file on insurance. Again, money is an issue across everybody's budgets, including Public Health, City Council, the state of Alabama. So if there's underlying insurance of some sort, we try to obtain compensation. We're only testing people who are symptomatic, so, or if you're a healthcare worker and have close exposure. So hopefully, the PCR tests are coming, they're getting much better. Capacity is, is really, I don't think a significant factor. The $85 to pay for the test may be a factor, but those are the two, two forms of testing that are going forward, is that the PCRs are FDA and emergency use authorized by the FDA, is they've met the standard. And then the antibody tests are still coming along. I think there are two that have improved antibody tests in the United States, maybe three that have been FDA-approved. There's a new Abbott machine coming out that's a PCR machine that's real quick results. We have about 22 of them in the state of Alabama. We have one on order for the Mobile County Health Department. The limiting step on those is Abbott does not have enough of the test kits of actual sampling size. So what we had limiting us with the Alabama Department of Public Health laboratory were actually the swabs and the culture medium that we collected. So when you slide the swab up in somebody's nose, then it has to be put into a culture medium, and then it has to be maintained at a proper temperature till you get it to the laboratory. So that was part of the piece that was missing, was actually the swab and the medium that you went, that you put the, the sample into, so the virus could then live for a period of time till it got to the laboratory and could be analyzed.
So the antibody test, the antibody test is a blood test for the virus, or it could also be confused with other viral activity that a person has?
It is a blood test. There is a saliva test for antibodies, but depends on what the test is. If the test is a COVID-19-specific, you know, laboratory test, and that's what tells just about COVID-19, my experience with the laboratory test is that they, right now, will react to the crown, the, the crown virus, the COVID virus, and not just COVID-19. So.
Got it.
If you had, so, so it's sensitivity and specificity are the two scientific terms that you look at. If I do a hemoglobin A1C, which is a diabetic test, what's your average blood sugar been for the past 90 days? You can sit down and pretty much go to any city, any place in the world, or in the United States, and know that that test is valid, sensitive, and reliable. So that's, those are the issues of testing. But, but information about COVID status is important, so, you know, as we go forward, you'll see a lot in the literature about, we need more testing, and especially, what we need is testing with PCR, finding who actually has virus.
Right.
Then they become a target, and then we have social workers and people working around that target, and, and then eliminate the spread of it. So that's how we actually took care of smallpox across the world, was target testing, and then found cases, and then immunized around the target, like a mile or two miles, and pretty much, we've had good results in controlling smallpox.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
While, while we have this break, I can ask that if you aren't speaking, put your microphone on mute, because we can hear conversations. I don't want to sing any, any, any particular group out, but any further questions for Dr. Isho?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Richardson.
Okay. Dr. Isho, thank, thank you for coming to be with us and sharing this valuable information. About 90% of the calls in Texas that I receive are regarding testing. Citizens want to be tested, especially if they work in an environment where a person in that environment tested positive for the coronavirus, and they believe that they, they had contact with that person, they show no symptoms, but they're living in fear, and they can't get anyone to test them, because the criteria is, you've got to have some sort of symptoms, you've got to have a temperature, the coughing, have a breakdown. They, they want to be people who, who are in fear, because they believe they have been compromised by someone else. They want to be tested. And so I'm, I'm, I wanted to know, how can we open this up to test more people?
Good, good. I don't think that anything we have is doing mass testing. The antibody test may help alleviate fear if, if, as far as exposures, but as far as us being able to walk in like the Church of the Highlands, which, which got a lot of publicity, that was a private church in Birmingham, 2,200 tests. They tested basically anybody walked in, they had their own medical, faith-based medical committee that, that authorized that testing and went forward. If we end up getting more and more machines, that will probably happen, that's probably not going to happen in the next six, eight, 10 weeks that I can see. The Abbott machine, we've got one on order. We need to get enough of the reagents. The machine comes with 10 reagents, and then you've got to first do some testing with it. So by the time we got the machine set up, we'd probably end up being able to test five people, maybe eight people. So that is, that is a problem, and I agree with you. They would like to be PCR tested, and that is the definitive test that we need to do, because that tells you right now, do you have COVID-19? Are you shedding virus? We've had multiple cases of people who've had COVID-19 and asymptomatic, and that's how South Korea actually PCR'd everybody and then tested them again, and they had good control over the COVID-19 spread. So we do not, to answer your question, we do not have the capacity or ability to test everybody multiple times, but that would be the ideal situation. everybody multiple times, but that would be the ideal situation.
Okay. So, um, do you, because they're going to continue to ask me, uh, can you forecast? Do you believe that, um, that it's come, these, these type tests are coming soon? Uh, you believe that, um, it's a long time off?
Uh, well, a long time, uh, I will tell you is I think it's going to be weeks, if not months, several months before we get there. And that could be a long time or a short time. So that's, that's where the capacity, the Abbott machines, we should have one here. When will Abbott have the testing supplies for the machine? Uh, but I don't see it being available before probably June to do the kind of testing I think you're talking about realistically. Uh, it's every state in the United States, uh, has got the same problem. So we can't ask manufacturers to, uh, to send more here. Fortunately, Alabama is like the 22nd most, uh, infected state by number of cases. So are we further down on getting supplies, which we'd probably say that's probably good because the squeaky wheel gets the grease? Is should we, if we had 100,000 cases, would we get more testing supplies? And the answer would probably be yes, because just like in a fire, the bigger the fire, the more fire trucks that show up. The same thing probably is in the national response. I'm not privileged to that information. So the states that were number, I think 22 last time I looked, maybe 23 as far as total number of cases of COVID-19 in the United States. So we're probably not going to get that capacity to test, uh, uh, ahead of, uh, New York, uh, who has much higher cases.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for, uh, Dr. Isho? Well, Dr. Isho, we certainly appreciate, uh, all of your hard work, the hard work of Dr. Murfree and others who've been giving us updates daily. And we, we appreciate the coordination between, uh, the mayor's office and the county commission, uh, and your staff, uh, to try to protect these many lives here in Mobile County as possible.
Thank you very much. It's an honor and privilege to serve. And again, please take care of your family and your friends, uh, as things get loosened up, uh, we need to be very cautious. And again, if you're out retailing, please wear some kind of covering over your face, uh, and we need to encourage the retailers to do the same. Uh, and we're all, the church experiences could be something a little different as we go forward, uh, but, uh, we will get there. Uh, this is not the first epidemic that's hit Mobile, Alabama. The, uh, yellow fever killed about 40% of the population. We're nowhere close to that, but any loss of life, uh, is a sad time. Uh, and so we will work with you guys, uh, to help, uh, bring our community back to what it was before. So thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you. And I think that message also needs to be sent to our, uh, fast food operators. I went to a local, uh, fast food restaurant. I won't call their name, uh, but I am writing their manager. Nobody had any kind of, uh, mask, gloves. Uh, I didn't eat the meal. That was $5 just thrown out. I didn't eat the meal and I'm not going to eat it because, uh, you have to have some kind of covering over your mouth, your nose, uh, no, uh, you say it's supposed to be contactless. Uh, she took my money just like this was 2018. Uh, so my point is we've got to be more vigilant. We have not, uh, we have not, uh, reached the point where we're going to go back to normalcy just yet. And we're appreciative of all of your efforts, Dr. Isho, to the mayor and everyone else working hard. Thank you all for what you're doing.
Thank y'all.
Uh, Mad, uh, Madam City Clerk?
You don't move on?
Clerk.
Okay. Yes, sir.
There we go.
Communications from the mayor.
Uh, good morning. Is this one on speaker on? Can y'all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, you know, because of the length of time we took on the lead in with Dr. Isho, a lot of the questions, there were, uh, some of your questions and certainly his answers covered most of what we've been dealing with, uh, every day of the last month. So I really don't have any other update other than I think that you have probably seen, you know, that we've taken advantage of the downtime around the city with, uh, with the various pavings. If you haven't driven downtown, they have opened up the, um, Tiger Grant right there in front of Broad, excuse me, in front of Bishop State. And they will now be tearing up the, the, um, the east side of the road. Anyway, but it's starting to, it's starting to look like something that you will tell eventually, once built out, what it will completely look like. So when you come back downtown, you'll have an opportunity to, uh, look at that. I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Mr. President. And Nirvan, the, Mr. President, you have muted, muted your mic.
How far? Any questions for, uh, the Honorable Mayor Sandusky Stimson?
I do.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Greg, Greg?
Thank you. Mayor, the, uh, the governor is on TV right now doing a news conference and, um, I'm guessing a lot of what she's talking about is how to go about reopening businesses and that sort of thing. We, um, discussed this morning at our pre-conference, some of those same issues with reopening the golf courses, basketball courts. Uh, we didn't get into salons, barber shops and other park amenities, but those are all certainly on the list. So as we go forward, can you help us understand better what your plan is and what you're looking at as far as reopening? And also on the list of things to think about would be gyms and churches and Dr. Isho mentioned choirs. I mean, how, how do we get that information out and enforce what it is we're trying to enforce?
So, um, I'm not, I'm not privy to what the governor is announcing right now. I'm not seeing her rollout plan, but really we were somewhat marking time to see what she said because it will dictate, you know, how we do, what we, what we need to do. Uh, yesterday, actually, we were having a conversation about the specific, uh, some of the specific businesses that you just mentioned, whether it be dentists, chiropractors, massage therapists, hair salons. I think for the, the ladies, um, in the community, I mean, a lot of the guys that their hair is getting, oh, it's getting kind of long. That really is into the barber shops. So we, we had a, uh, long conversation this morning with the Unified Command on how to open up some of these, um, businesses so that people that are going to get their hair done, are going to the dentist, how do they feel, you know, protected? So the steps are going to be, first off, we'll see what the governor said. We'll see what our timeline is. And prior to that timeline, when, let's say things were open, we will have some specific suggestions on, um, what we think we should do. Under the, um, authority of the Unified Command, you know, we're trying to coordinate this with the county and the public health department. Whereas some of the first actions we were taking before the Unified Command was stood up, you know, we made just as a city by ourself without really waiting for approval. Now with the Unified Command, we, it takes a little more time to get more collaboration and what the pathway forward will be. So, uh, just as soon as we have something, we'll start, you know, rolling that out, letting everybody know what does it look like.
Mr. Chair, President.
Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as I understand it, the authority that the county health officer has is given to him by law after a declaration of emergency. Is, is that a correct statement?
Uh, just to turn to Ricardo Flo. Repeat it one time, John.
So here's my, here's my, what, what, what people have been asking me, and I'm not real clear, but I have the understanding that, that first of all, the governor declares a, a state of emergency, which allows certain things to happen. And one is it gives a greater authority to the county health officer, one of, a preemptive authority that, um, that he can open and close and, uh, and, and make orders as well as the state health officer. And, and, and I'm hopeful that what we're going to see is some lessening of the state of emergency and, and the ability for local governments to be in charge of, of their restaurants, uh, offices, medical facilities and such. I just kind of wonder what the procedure was going to be.
So Flo or Ricardo, which one are you going to take that?
So I, I'll take that. So can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Can you hear Ricardo?
Yes.
So the answer is, the answer is yes, in certain, in, in emergency situations, uh, both the state health officer and the county health officer, they, they have additional powers. But even if it wasn't an emergency, there are certain jurisdictions that, uh, that I would say allow the health officer to do things under different forms of the statute. So, um, right now, what we'll be operating under is whatever the state health officer tells you. And the, even, even when the state health officer is operating in a state of emergency, uh, they're coordinating with the Mobile County or the specific county health officer, but the state officer preempts. So to remember the, the April 3rd order we're under right now, the one we refer to as governor's order, that order came from the state health officer.
Okay. And so the answer is still, it's out of our hands. And the governor relaxes certain standards and hopefully is doing that today. Um, it's, uh, it is, everybody ought to be looking to, to Montgomery and not to a, uh, local government that is ready to move smartly.
That's correct.
I, I have a question for the mayor.
Ms. Rich?
Thank you very much. Mayor Stimson, good morning. Um, thank you for everything your office has been doing and all the people interfacing with this, um, COVID-19 issue. I have a question about the test kits. Um, it is an agenda item and since we're talking right now and my mind is on this, are these FDA-approved test kits, to your knowledge?
No, uh, they are not FDA-approved except for, pardon. No, they're not FDA-approved.
Okay. Um, could I understand how you plan to interface them into our community? Who will receive them and what information? Because if the, um, PCR is the, um, I guess the standard, um, test for the virus, is there any initiative that the city should take in order to have those tests available to citizens?
Okay. So I'm going to answer part of the question, then I'm going to flip to Director Barber.
Thank you.
There's, there, the, the gold standard test is the PCR test, which is the nasal swab. All right? The antibody test, rapid serum, it goes by several names, is a screening tool. Right? We were among the first people in the nation to have that screening tool and starting to use it. And that came through, um, Synergy Labs with Brad Pitts. And that is what we've used on our first responders. And as a screening tool, what we used it for was to determine if they were actively producing antibodies, uh, which would indicate that they actively had the disease. And also it, the antibody test showed whether the, they had previously had the disease. If they showed they were actively producing antibodies, meaning they were, they had the disease at that moment, then we gave them the nasal swab or the PCR test. And depending on whether that was positive or negative, you know, they would be sent home. That's what we were doing on our first responders. So when it comes to the number of tests we have, I'll let, uh, Director Barber give maybe more detailed information, but the antibody test is a screening tool. It is not a diagnostic test like the PCR is. And there, they, they, uh, as far as being FDA-approved, there were, I'm going to say, almost no FDA-approved antibody test when they showed up to begin with. It's only recently or some of them being FDA-approved, but we're still validating, uh, their, the, the, uh, efficacy of the test maybe?
That's correct. The, um, you know, we began this, you know, there, there seems to be a lot of confusion on how we're applying the antibody test, um, but the, the short answer is that they're applied by experienced, trained medical personnel. They're not being applied by firemen or anything like that. And so we had partnered up with either Diagnostic Medical or, um, University Hospital to provide those personnel that are administering the antibody screening. And so if you do come back with positive, uh, that's when they go to the PCR. So we're not using it as a diagnostic tool because it is not FDA-approved as a diagnostic tool. The only approved FDA diagnostic tool right now is the PCR test that you hear everybody talking about. So if you do show that you have these antibodies, we're using the PCR test to determine if you're asymptomatic and yet still a carrier of COVID-19 virus. And that's the only way we can tell. And so you also heard Dr. Isho talk about the possibility of a crossover, which means that it could detect other Corona-based viruses that are not COVID-19. And that, that is probably a true statement. We don't know, there's not enough research on all of this yet to prove that, but I think you can assume that. And so that's why the PCR test is so important to determine whether or not we're dealing with COVID-19. I think you're going to see antibody testing get far more quantitative and qualitatively better in the future because more of that machinery is coming in. Again, we caught ourselves with a new virus. So we're just now trying to get all of our medical equipment. So to answer Mr. Richardson's question about being able to do more mass testing, it's coming and slowly we're seeing we're getting more access to antibody. And again, not as bad, but only as a screening tool. And it, what we do know is that it will detect COVID-19 antibodies. And that's why it's important that we continue to use it until the medical community can catch up with where we are. That help?
Yes, I, I appreciate that information very much. Um, i- is the city looking at, at, um, allocating funds for the standard tests also for the community in, in helping the, um, health department? Is that something that you're looking towards or thinking about?
Nobody's turned away. Yeah. So let me answer part of that and then I'll flip back to Director Barber. Um, the, there's a difference in the cost of the kits. So the antibody kit, you know, is $12 to $14, uh, although we have seen prices as high as $50 to $70 with people trying to, you know, extort, uh, the opportunity. So the ones we have bought are in that price range. When it comes to the PCR test, it's about, the cost of the kit itself, uh, is about, um, $50, something in that range. So we have, we have, the, once we have purchased from the city, we have contributed, uh, the $14 test, let's say, to do different things, you know, to different, I mean, for different groups, not different things. It has been used as a screening tool for our first responders, first responders in neighboring communities, first, uh, of the healthcare personnel. You know, a lot of the ones that we got actually went to healthcare personnel so the hospitals could use them. But when it comes to the, how much money, uh, the city has spent or is going to spend, uh, Synergy Lab is providing the PCR test. Uh, we're not paying for that. I mean, the people that are being tested, first off, if they have insurance, in Blue Cross or whomever the insurance is paying for that, not the city on the PCR test. Somebody does not have insurance, now that, that differential in cost, uh, is how it's being done or possibly by an entity, a, a company that maybe the individual works for. So we are not really, uh, paying anything for the, uh, PCR test. What we are doing is we're supplying policemen, barricades, tents and so forth. We stood up the facilities for, for the Diagnostic Medical Clinic and for Lad Stadium. And because we provided that service, they're not, uh, charging people that don't have insurance. Does that help you with your question? And if not, I can flip to Director Barber to fill in where I didn't cover.
No.
Yeah.
Good.
At the very onset of this, when, uh, we were reached out by Diagnostic Medical, then University Hospital to assist them with setting up sites, securing the sites, barricades, you know, to avoid what happened in, in Birmingham, basically. And, uh, we agreed to that under certain conditions. One of them is that we could not support a site that only took care of their patients. It had to be open to the public with a public number that people in the public could call if they needed. if they needed testing. And the other one, the other condition was that it is a, they're underinsured or insured. So we began working with the health department to make sure that we had everything covered as we went forward, before we mixed public assets with private assets, because we're not here for profit.
Thank you very much for all that information. Greatly appreciate it.
Our colleagues, are there any other questions of either the mayor or any member of his, of the staff relative to the pandemic and the city's response?
Mr. President?
Mr. Richardson?
I'd like to commend the mayor for his vigilance in regard to COVID-19. He is all over the place trying to get tests done, see about, see anything about the people. Mr. Mayor, when this Abbott test is available, I hope that you are equally vigilant for this test. It seems to me that this is sort of like on the spot. You know, when, when this test is available, you don't have to wait. It is on the spot. So it's not available now. So when it is available, I would like to see you turn your attention to that one because we would know, we can know on the spot what's up to our citizens.
And we're, we're paying very close attention to the availability of tests, and we're trying to kind of thread a needle right here. Council Richardson, buying these that aren't FDA-approved, we recognize that there's going to come a point where we do need to buy, it's going to be beneficial to buy the FDA-approved, but not knowing exactly what the availability is going to be, we're buying some of these other kits. And I'll give you an example of what the, what I thinking is. It's, it's not a clear pathway of how you roll out, let's say, beauticians and barbers, but it's conceivable that you could test them all with the PCR test, excuse me, you could test them all, or not, you could screen them all with the antibody test so that at that moment in time, you know that they're, that they are not actively, you know, producing the virus. But if they did, if they came up positive, we would give them the PCR test. So you could, we could visualize all the barbers and beauticians going back to work having had that test. Now, everybody would need to understand, that was for that moment in time that they were not sick, okay? And so they would have their own protocols for making sure that maybe they had to wear masks, maybe they had to wash their hands, you know, a bunch of times and all that stuff to kind of keep their clientele safe. But we're trying to figure out what is the best way and to whom do we test to get our community, you know, back working again? And we don't have all the answers right now. And so, but we're listening to the input from people like yourselves and everybody really that says, can you do this? And so we're, we're sorting through that right now.
Okay. What our last thought on that, I think, when it's time for us to open up, we can't, I don't think we're going to be the old norm, what, what was norm before the virus will not be the new norm. So it seems to me, by us opening up, we're not saying that the virus is not out there. We have licked the viruses all over. In that sense though, I think we may need to look at everybody that's going back to work and that's going to serve the public, I don't care what's the name of your job, you need to be tested before you go back. I don't, I don't care if you're in the cleaners, where, wherever you're working, that if you're going to, if you're going to be, have any contact with the public, that you ought to, ought to be tested.
Well, you know, each, each day, each three or four days, there's new information, there's more PPE, there's more advice on how to do this, and we'll continue to stay abreast of it.
All right.
Well, thank you for, again, your, your leadership, the leadership of your staff, the coordination that we referenced between the health department and Commissioner Lovegood and creating this unified command. And asked that you all would continue to be vigilant because this is an enemy that we did not know was coming, but we've got to be aggressive and appreciate all that your office is doing.
Thank you very much.
Mayor City Clerk?
Adoption of the agenda?
Some move.
Second.
It's been properly moved to second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Daves?
I'd like to move that Item 03300 through 25312 be approved as essential COVID items in the agenda.
I would second.
Properly moved to second, any discussion? Absent any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Then we need to adopt the agenda as amended.
It's been properly moved to second, any, that we would adopt the agenda as amended, as any discussion?
No.
Absent any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, what's that?
Essential COVID items held over. 21294 Authorized Contract with Sanders Highland Corporation for Hillsdale Park Community Center Gymnasium Flooring. 21295 Authorized Contract with Sanders Highland Corporation for James Seals and Harmon Recreation Center Gymnasium Flooring. 21296 Authorized Contract with SC Stagner Contracting for PFC Howard Johnson Park Security Cameras, Lighting and Site Improvement. 21297 Authorized Contract with Watkins AC Strunk Design for Mardi Gras Park Improvement.
Some move.
Second.
Properly moved to second, any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Ms. Gregory?
Thank you. Just about the Hillsdale Recreation Center gym flooring. Really happy to see this coming. I toured the rec center with staff and some of the residents well over a year ago and just happy to see that this is one of the improvements that we noted that were needed. Happy to note that it is coming to fruition. So thank you very much to all the staff for moving this forward.
And I'd like to echo those sentiments by Ms. Gregory as relates to the flow, the floor replacements there at Texas Street, James Seals and at Harmon. These are much-needed amenity improvements, and it's further evidence that even while we are in these uncertain times, the business of the city is still moving forward. And appreciate all of the staff that have worked hard on these items and look forward to them being implemented. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Essential COVID items, 03300 through 21, I'm sorry, 25312.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I would move that the, that the rules be waived and we take up for immediate consideration Item 03300, 08303, 08305, 13308 and 253112.
Properly moved to second, all in favor? No, any discussion, pardon me, any discussion? Absent any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
03300, appoint Maria Gonzalez to the Water and Sewer Board of Commissioners. 08303 Approved Purchase Order to Test Kits at Home LLC for COVID-19 Test Kits. 08305 Approved Purchase Order to Samsung. Equipment to replace hydraulic side loading arm on garbage trucks. 13308 Authorized Change Order with Harris Contracting Services for Meadow Abana Park Field Lighting. 25312 Granted Easement to Alabama Power Company for Mobile Fire Rescue Department and Training Academy.
Some move, some, second?
It's been properly moved to second. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Absent any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. I would like to acknowledge that we did receive a letter to address the council from Reggie Hill, and we also received a subsequent letter from him that I will forward to each of you this afternoon. And it will be entered into the official minutes of the meeting. Announcement?
Masters, we're going to start this week with Ms. Gregory.
Thank you.
From the 7th District.
Surprised.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. This past Wednesday, Feeding the Gulf Coast coordinated with our seniors center and Ashley Nicole Flowers to help deliver 10 boxes of food for seniors who are shut in over in Mobile Terrace. We worked with the community action group president over there to help identify where the need was. These are seniors who are not part of our sale program, but they are shut in and certainly have a great need to receive these food items. And so I'm very grateful for what Ashley has done and for all of the work that Feeding the Gulf Coast is doing. Also, the Seventh Day Adventist Church on Cody Road was the distribution site, all the food was taken there, and then they divided it up, put it into boxes and helped us get everything distributed. So many thanks to everyone involved, including Marion Steinfels, who has been coordinating a lot of this for me and other council members as well. And speaking about Feeding the Gulf Coast, I'm working with two other churches in the district to provide food for those who are in need during this time. There will be some food trucks, provisions made where people can come and get food that they need, food items that they need. Don't have the dates yet, but we're working to get those set up pretty quickly because I know the need is there and we don't need to keep waiting. So as soon as we have the dates set, we will certainly let people in those neighborhoods and surrounding neighborhoods who are in need know that we are making some provisions to help them get through this very difficult time. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're merited, Mr. President.
Pardon me. Absolutely no problem, Ms. Gregory. Thank you for all of your efforts in the 7th. We'll now go to Mr. John Williams of the 4th District.
Wow. It wasn't as surprising as Ms. Gregory's first speaking, but I do appreciate it very much. There was a lot of storm damage, and I want to just give my appreciation to the Parks and Recreation, as well as Public Works, who jumped into action even before I was able to notify them yesterday, the destruction of one of our dugouts at Mem's Park. It is, it is still very important that people call 311, more importantly now than any other time. And so I, I plan to include that in my newsletter this week, that while the administration focuses on those things that are, are very important to combating the COVID-19 virus, we need to use the procedures that are in place rather than call offices that are, are being manned appropriately and interfering with those things that the administration is trying to address. But again, hats off to the administration, and I look forward to us being back to work and us being in office. And I hope that we will make a decision in the very near future that says that we're going back to the auditorium and maintain our spacing and, and work as a body. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. We'll now hear from Council Vice President CJ Small from the 3rd District.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to piggyback behind Councilman Williams on looking forward soon to going back to the auditorium. One of my biggest concerns is public hearings, again, behind the public hearings, especially with the weed and lean program and everything, because as we know, we're experiencing a lot of rain. After the rain, the sunshine, after the sunshine is the weed and grass, especially on vacant property. So, so that's something that we need to address as soon as possible before we get too far behind in that and phones start ringing more than what they are ringing now. Also, I'd like to announce that work has started moving along the Baltimore Street. It was so funny, this past weekend, there was some talk or conversation at Lattes Pharmacist, and it was saying that they were about to get ready to start work on Baltimore Street. The crews went out on Friday and put up signs, work ahead, and they were saying, no, they're not working on Baltimore Street, they're working on Broad Street, you know? And their faith got so small and so little because it's been neglected for so long, they still don't think that Baltimore Street is about to get fixed. So even though all the orange stripes and everything along the streets, their faith is still weak, but many citizens are happy in the Odell community because, again, this has been a long neglected project within our city. But great things are coming ahead. Thank you, Mr. Vice, excuse me, thank you, Mr. President.
Absolutely no problem, Mr. Vice President, and congratulations on, I know Baltimore Street has been a high priority for you. I know the six years I've been on the council, and I just want to say to the residents in nearby Texas Street that, that your time is coming soon. Just hold on, your time is coming soon. We'll now go to Mr. Daves.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to join my colleagues in commending Mayor Stimpson and, and all those in his administration who are, and, and Dr. Ischel, the county commissioners who are working tirelessly to address this unprecedented public health challenge we all face. We have, hopefully, reached a point where we can begin thinking about how we, how we allow everybody to go back to work and, and get our economy going again. Those are difficult decisions. Those are very difficult decisions. We are in, as I said, an unprecedented time. We have no roadmap. We haven't been here before. The, the path is dark, it's overgrown, it's hard to see how you go. There's no, there's no, no one that's done this before. And, and the chief executives of all of our cities in this country and, and the governors and presidents are, are each one faced with a challenge that is different than the other, than the others face. And how you balance, we, we've been focused up to this point, as we should have been, on the, on the health challenge posed by the, by the virus. And there, and there are risks associated with moving back to normalcy too quickly. There, there are also risks associated with not moving back. And, and how you balance those risks is a difficult decision and, as I say, different for each, each chief executive of all of our political institutions. So I, I don't envy them their jobs. I, I think that they each need to make up their own minds. We're in difficult times. I, again, appreciate the job our mayor is doing. I appreciate the job our county commissioners are doing, our public health officials are doing, our governors doing, everybody that has, that faces this. And, and I appreciate the job our citizens are doing, by and large, responding to this challenge. And hopefully by working all together, the politicians, we can, we can resolve this in an orderly and hopefully rapid fashion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Daves. We'll now hear from Councilwoman Bess Casper-Rich of the 6th District.
Thank you very much. I appreciate this opportunity. And I too want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues to thank the mayor, his staff, and everyone who's interfaced with this pandemic emergency. And as others have said, it's a fine balance in getting back to what we talk about as normalcy, but talk about as normalcy, but there will be changes, no doubt, because of the experiences that we've all carried through on this particular issue. Um, I, I know that our chief, um, health officer, um, made a highly recommended suggestion or, um, didn't make it mandatory, but asked that people wear face masks when they're out. And I do hope that they'll do that. It protects themselves, it protects others, and it can be a scarf, you can cut a T-shirt. There are so many Youtubes on how to make this so that it's really not a cost to you. If you can't get a regular mask somewhere, you can make one and craft one at home. Please use it. And, um, again, I thank all the citizens for their willingness to help spare our community their heartache and sorrow if this indeed becomes such a, a widespread pandemic. And right now, as our chief medical officer has said, we are managing it medically in the community, which is a great, um, or, I guess, comfort to all of us to know and that everyone participated in making that happen. And we have to continue to make it happen. And, and hopefully we will get back in, into our events and all the things that we hold dear to our community and the businesses, uh, which I know are suffering. There isn't anyone that hasn't been touched. But I've been very impressed with people, um, in my district and I'm sure all of your districts as well, that have reached out to their neighbor and are continuing to help them get things that they need. So again, I just want to reiterate how important it is that we all participate to pay our share and we can make a big difference. And don't forget to wear your masks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rich. And we'll hear now from, uh, the council representative from the First District, Mr. Fred Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to start off commending all of our citizens, uh, all over the city for generally, uh, adhered to, um, the, uh, stay home from, the curfew from ten PM to five AM. I've had, I've turned it to ride through, uh, most of the city to see what was happening, uh, what we need, maybe need to do something most stringent. But, uh, by and large, uh, the citizens are obeyed. Uh, some, some communities, um, seem to be a little more active than others, but, uh, generally the citizens are adhering, uh, to that policy. And, um, and I see more and more people wearing masks and gloves out in the public now. Uh, my general concern now is, um, these restaurants, especially fast food, where you drive up there and no one is wearing a glove, no one has no gloves. It seems to me that if you have to have a food, have, have to have a permit to handle food, you're, uh, in such a time as this, certainly you need to have gloves on if you're gonna have, be handling food and really a mask on too. Cause you could sneeze over the food and infect everybody that's going to eat the food. So I don't know what are we, what's going, what it's going to take to do that. I would imagine if we closed one of them down, all of them would get right. Uh, I don't think it's fair to write tickets to the people that's out over five o'clock, over at the ten o'clock and let these food, food handling people go scot-free. I know our president talked about his experience. I went up to one last night and I saw this same identical thing. It ought not to be, it ought to be some way to, to close that down. Uh, but, uh, again, I would like to commend the mayor, like commend our citizens also. Uh, and if we all adhere to the policy, uh, then the sooner we'll be able to go back to normal. Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Richardson. Uh, I certainly feel like you feel relative to, uh, your last part of your commentary. Uh, it's just totally irresponsible at this day and age and in this environment for persons who are associated with fast food. It could be curbside pickup, it wouldn't be that, you know? You're gonna pick the food up, uh, if it's going to be, uh, it, it ought to be in a safe manner. Or drive up and tend to get a, a cheeseburger, get a Corona burger. Cover your mouth, cover your nose. Uh, and if you can't do that, I don't want it. And I absolutely don't want it. And I wasted five dollars and fifty cent yesterday dealing with a restaurant in District Two that I will be contacting the management. Because, uh, I really should have, should have said something then, but it was a long line. And so long, so short, I, I totally agree, and it may be that we have to pass some legislation. Yes, I'm asking Mr. Aldrich to look into, whether or not we have that ability. Uh, if we're gonna ask the patrons to wait outside and when you come inside to have masks on, then surely you ought to have something on as you pass me my, uh, what I've ordered. I want to say to the citizens of District Two, that while we are in uncertain times, you can be certain the councilman is responding. Look out to me and however I can be of help, I'm willing to do just that. We've got road resurfaces going on downtown, out in the Plateau community, upgrades to our community centers. Uh, I'm working with Feeding the Gulf Coast, I allocated maybe about three weeks ago almost seven thousand dollars to that organization. And my goal is to do three food giveaways in, in hard hidden areas of District Two. We're trying to go over into the Mayville community, come over to the MLK and Campground community, and then also to the Plateau community. And so we're working with Feeding the Gulf Coast, I'm appreciative, Marion Stiles, coordinating, uh, on my officers behalf, uh, these efforts and to the churches that have already, uh, in, indicated some willingness to serve as, as, uh, distribution points. Thank you. You know, there's yet a long road to, to go, but I believe if we continue to follow the guidelines of our scientists and not put ourselves above others, uh, that we will come out of this stronger and more resilient, uh, as a community and as a people. I want to conclude my announcements by, uh, well, probably, I got one more I want to make and then I'll conclude. Uh, I want to acknowledge the passing of long-term, longtime city employee, uh, Mr. Roger Bendoff. I really intended to have a moment of silence for him. As a matter of fact, let's have a moment of silence for Roger right now. We're gonna have a moment of silence right now for long-term city employee. He was my new Super Mobile classmate, greatest class two thousand and six. And, uh, so if we could, I know someone out of custom, out of, uh, out of, but he, he, he deserves. Let's observe a moment of silence. Remember, Mr. Roger Bendoff and all the families that have been impacted Thank you. I want to conclude my announcements by, uh, commending where he's gone now, but his chief of staff, Mr. West, and his, over the last six and a half years, there have been items that each and every one of us have disagreed or agreed with the mayor as relates to running of city government. But in this instance, and under this pandemic, I've got to give him eight for effort in trying all kinds of ways to be creative. He got a gift from Netanyahu's son and he didn't get it. It didn't matter, it was helpful to somebody in this community. So whether it's from Benjamin Netanyahu's son or not, thank you to whoever sent it so that we can have impact in attacking and eradicating this horrendous virus. Thank you to Mayor Stimson, to Director Barber, to each and every one, to our hardworking firefighters, paramedics, to our first responders, our police officers, to the gentleman who go up and down the streets in our sanitation trucks. Thank you for all you do. It does not go unnoticed. Uh, it's appreciated not only by our citizens, but by this council. We appreciate what you do. And my last comment is to my seniors who know they have underlying illnesses. You know you're sick, you know you're suffering with this, that, or the other. Stay at home. If you don't stay at your home, you end up at the funeral. We don't want that. You can live if you stay at home. It's not worth going out to Walmart and other. Download Instacart, download one of these food delivery services. If you know you're at risk, the place for you to be is at your house. And so, uh, that's where I'm gonna be. Looking for me, find me at home. But don't come by here, call me because I'm not having conversations. I'm not taking any meetings, but I'm still working for you. I can have a Zoom meet with you, but I'm not taking any in-office meetings because I'm trying to live.
Motion to adjourn.
I, I went through with my announcements, Mr. West.
All right.
I let everybody make their own announcements, let me make mine.
You're on, Doc, you're on.
We've, we've had the last, I mean, the last three announcements have been the last announcement.
Pardon me, Mr. Daves, but, uh, that concludes my announcements. Is there a motion?
There is.
Is there a second? If we probably moved to second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.